Good evening. Light call the Alton Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty at six P. M. Please all stand for pledge of leaders, a moment of silence. Mr. Holt, I'll ask you to lead us tonight again.
I pledge of leaders to the flag, United States of America, to the republic, over which it stands, my nation, with the power and the physical liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Until further notice, to keep our members and staff safe and to comply with the hours, say ninety-one dash eight, the state of emergency and governance orders, restriction on public gatherings, the town of Alton has moved from the in-person meetings to remote audio participation meetings. To remotely attend the meeting, audio and video, visit our website, www.alton.nh.gov. On the day of the meeting or the instructions or telephone, the selectman's office, six zero three eight seven five two one one three, four six zero three eight seven five zero two two nine. There continues to be no public input at this time. If I get in tonight, working on the budgets again for the meeting purpose, and number three would be other business as deemed necessary. If you gentlemen would make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
No move, Mr. Kim.
Motion made. And who's second there? Paul Lucel's second. I'll poll the board. Mr. Holt?
Yes, Mr. Lucel.
Lucel. Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Swinworth?
Yes. Votes in the affirmative. So we'll start with budget presentations, building department forty-one ninety-two. Mr. Devers is here to join us tonight.
Hey, John.
Evening, John. It's been a while since I've seen you. Hope things are all well with you. I know they're busy. Stay the least. And I know things are crazy for you in your field. So I'll let you start by highlighting anything in your department that you'd like.
Essentially, I made no changes to the budget other than salary, salary line and steel and everything that I modified. Did a lot of work last year, so I've kept it very simple. Some of the expenses obviously are pretty low, like lab fees, that's generally for testing. Water testing for the beaches.
Let me ask you something. State mandates that?
That's part of the, it's part of our program where they're monitoring the beaches, yes.
And they don't pay us to do it?
They don't pay us to do it. We pay them.
If you remember, last year, we got notice that the public swim docks did not have to be tested as much. They weren't a concern. And the public beach had to, but not as much as usual, if I remember the letter correctly, John.
State laws. They would still do it consistently, but we didn't, because of the overall quality of results of swim dock, it was, I shouldn't be, this state body of water.
But it's our beaches which are town-owned, which we allow public swimming. I believe this is why they do not pay for it.
And everything else, just hold it off on spending money.
I just have one question, Mr. Kim. Yes, sir. Simple, let me. On the two oh eight boat expenses, how does that work? You know, I read the backup.
If you want, can I get our expenses?
Necessary.
Right. For some reason, I generally take the police boat, and I take that by myself. But, because I have my license and that's how, that's, so I use the boat, the police boat, I put fuel in that. Vampire will be, if the police boat wasn't available and I had to go out there, the only other boat is the fireboat. And I would have to use firefighters to run the boat. I'm not, I, that's not a way to run one themselves.
So, so if that takes place, we reimburse the fire department?
For the hours, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you have to pay the. I got a question for you on O two nine, benefit buyout. Now, we would put that in even on the first year that she comes in?
I, on the first year on the.
He or she?
He, yeah, I'm a secretary. We're planning to hire a new secretary, yes.
That's why I'm asking. He or she?
He or she.
Okay, thank you. Gender neutrally, come on.
I'll hand it off to Laura.
That in right on the first year?
Will you still be budgeting right now for your current secretary? Kind of half done right now? That's booked out.
Okay, that's the only question I got on it. John, the only thing I didn't see, or as I've seen on the departments, anything for PPE in their budget? Or do you have enough room in your budget that you could buy PPE?
I could buy, I, there is money where I could get it. I have, we have, I have a stockpile.
Okay, just wanted to know, because other departments have put it in for it, that's why.
Right. No, I haven't, I've been distributing it out whenever people need it, but I do have some stockpile. One thing was in two, proposed to the CIP to add preparations for student boat trucks. Actually, to CIP, looking at a ten-year plan or so, be able to put some way and have it available.
Mr. Kim.
Yes, sir.
John, on the, on two fourteen, the nine sixty-five for vehicle fuel, that's an increase, obviously, because this year has just been more.
Well, it was, for two thousand and twenty, it was at nine sixty-five, and I left it at that for the upcoming years.
I do see that, okay.
Yeah, he's right on line.
He's right on line with it, yep.
Yep.
So like you said, basically, the increase roughly four percent of, of everything is, most of it is due to the fact of the increase in salaries?
Yes. If things keep going the way they are, my revenues would probably be pretty good. Ruin could, if things are slow down, but so far, wow.
There's gonna be a bust somewhere later. Can't keep going like this.
Thirty-two thousand for a year already.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
Well, you can add one more to it.
I've got three today.
You did? I'm getting ready.
I know you're gonna.
Quite a bit.
Boy, quite a change from having about five to ten per year.
That's good.
In climate. Gentlemen, any other question for Mr. Devers?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Devers, thank you for the job. Well done, completed, and everything you've been through this year with your department. We really do appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's hope that two thousand and twenty-one might turn around, but right now, until next July, it doesn't look that way.
For everybody. Oh, have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. You too. Thanks to be the fire department chief. He'd like to join us.
All right.
Is there anything you'd like to highlight in your budget that's such an increase from last year that, besides what your justification sheet show us?
There's nothing more than justification sheet show. You'll see that it's a four percent increase. And basically, it's payroll lines and it's our dispatch line. And then there's a fairly significant increase in the full-time payroll line, as we had talked about before, trying to get a, kind of a daytime officer in, starting in July, in July.
So the only question I gotta ask you.
Yeah.
So that's why it's only thirty-three thousand dollar increase, because you're only going from July forward?
Yeah.
So from town meeting.
If this gets approved by the, if this gets approved at town meeting, it's gonna take those months to get somebody hired. You know, we're gonna have to go through a process, make sure it's the right person.
So then the following year, we could see that increase by another thirty thousand?
I would imagine, yeah.
Okay. I had a question, Mr. Kim. Yes, sir. On, uh, fire dispatch. What number, sir? With the?
Yep.
One one four. I read the backup, the lakes region. I'm not too familiar with that. How, there's more than one town?
Yeah, they dispatch about thirty-eight different towns.
Thirty-eight?
Yep, thirty towns and ambulances.
So how do they figure out what each town should pay? Do they have a formula?
Yeah, they use a formula that's based on evaluation for the most part. Then there's a six factor that involves, that has nineteen in, just a fixed number that they use. The formula is basically based on that.
So we're happy, you're happy with that formula or?
Um, the formula seems fair when you look at all the towns. I mean, it is an expensive service. There's no question about that. But the service that we get is exemplary. It's much better than, you know, there's many other services that are in our area. Our police share dispatches, and the fire department really becomes the lone and the sole role. I've heard some cases where fire departments have had emergencies and heydays, and they've been put on hold so that they can finish the traffic stop. And it's just, it's because it's police dispatch, they don't understand how to prioritize the fire stop. You know, it's nothing derogatory towards them. It's just their training. They also do more than just dispatch. They come in and help set up our run cards for our mutual aid system. They come in and they help with our fit testing for our SCBA masks. They, they come in and do training. So they have an entire training division that actually helps with that.
On two oh one, new equipment, who we buy in this year?
A lot of that is gonna be replacing old equipment. So as ax handles break and things like that, we end up replacing that. But we got some bigger stuff that just has to get replaced. We have a gas meter on every engine. Instead of taking it all at once and replacing all of them, they're on rotation. So you gotta buy one, pretty much buy one a year, as far as that goes. The smoke ejector fan, they've come out with some new ones that are now battery operated, the new battery technology. They take up a lot less space and they, you know, they really hammer a generator when you try to run it off a generator for a long time.
In the two eleven, the lease per, lease per truss, we're leasing one of them fire vehicles?
Uh, that is the, well, we're leasing a fire truck. That's out of the apparatus, vehicle lease purchase, the line before that. The equipment lease purchase is the SCBA, got a few years back. Half of it was paid out, capital reserve, the other half was leased. I believe it's this year and next year will be the last week. So two thousand and twenty-two.
What fire truck do we lease?
Uh, the new engine four.
That's seventy-seven thousand a year?
Very ten year.
So I take it you're gonna take your PPE out of personal protection? Line on four fifty-one? I didn't see you increase it. You have quite a bit left over this year, so I was just wondering where you're getting some of your PPE? Or did the most of that come from the state?
So we got some from the state, and some of it is ambulance PPE, and some of it is fire PPE that we got to buy this year. Um, it's the ambulance side that's really taken a hit. We've used a lot of N ninety-five masks and a lot of, you know, surgical masks. One-time use pieces. The PPE that's here is not necessarily one-time use stuff. This is more of us, you know, preparing SCBA models for our actual turnout gear. Like the vests, things, things that we use on a, you know, a year-round basis.
Line four four eight, employee health, is that insurance?
Uh, no, that is for pre-employment physicals and continued employment physicals. So NPA requires physicals yearly for firefighters. Doing thirty firefighters every year is very expensive. We've kind of worked in a program to get everybody done at least every three years.
Your fire prevention program is starting that back up?
We're trying to, but we just don't know if we're gonna get back into the schools. Pardon me?
Who are we gonna teach then?
Our plan is to get back into the schools. It just depends on what happens with sand depth. Um, if not, we can do some remote stuff. We've set up some, like, videos, we can send them, you know, where we talk to them. We haven't tried the Zoom thing yet, because sometimes the kids are hard to, you know, keep focused on the TV.
Hello. Four five three, the fire equipment testing?
Yep.
You can't, we doing that every other year or?
No, that's all yearly stuff that has to be done yearly. We have to, it is basically making sure this stuff works. So like our breathing air compressor, that has to be done quarterly. Has to be done four times a year to make sure that the air we're breathing is clean, safe. Um, you know, the hose has to, we gotta make sure our hoses don't burst and things like that. So everything has to be done yearly. We don't, we don't like surprises during an emergency.
That hose testing you were talking about is the same as what we talked about last year, all in this as well?
Yes. And then, you know, like when we do the hose testing, we find out we have some hose that's either out of compliance, bursting, that gets replaced out of new equipment.
Any other questions for the fire chief?
I got one.
Yes, sir.
One here. Asked this question last year, and I can't remember the answer. The, uh, the buyout.
Line one, Bob?
O two nine, benefit buyout. We, we don't put any money in there for?
So, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the employee buyout is for someone that has to, is going to be retiring or leaving, so they can buy out their, what's left of their time.
Oh, no, not really.
Usually that's for, if you're not gonna use your personal time, but I mean, you really only have two employees. So if he knows that they're gonna use them, then he wouldn't not need to budget. But like, if you know you're not gonna take your two floating and your personal, that was what you would budget for. But there's only two of them.
Say if they, the other thing, Bob, is that say if he had four weeks vacation, but he could only take two weeks this year, he'd come in and request that he gets one of those weeks, carry one week over and get paid out one week. That would come out of this line item. There's no money in that line item. He plans on taking all his vacations and doesn't ask employees.
I thought a few years ago, we set up where we were gonna put benefit buyout into a budget.
You did?
Not in all these budgets.
That's for when somebody retires or leaves their position altogether.
There is a step to line out for that, but if somebody leaves and they have.
That was my understanding of benefit buyout. That's why we started up.
No, that was sort of more of the sick time, longevity pay. What else was there that was involved in that? I mean, they all of a sudden came in and there were six weeks or eight weeks to buy out. How many hours can they carry over on vacation? I can't remember.
Eighty.
So if you had someone with that much time, such as say, Mr. Roberts, who's been here the longest now of any of the employees, he came in retired, you'd have a big buyout, because I think he has quite an accumulation on the books from when the town allowed.
Home time.
Home time. It's been carried over. So that would come out of that line item, benefit buyout, not this line.
Right. This is basically just for like six days a year or, you know, that you're.
And two is.
I hope you have encouraged them to take it.
And two is, this allows that salary to be left alone, so you can go out and hire someone, so you don't overexpend that payroll line when you hire somebody new. So if you took the chief here, the police chief or the road agent, and they retired and know suddenly we didn't have that money, you hit his salary line, which would overexpend that.
But that's part of that, when we set up that benefit buyout.
And it is.
All of that, that buyout, that discussed it to set up that account was, that was.
That, I, I wasn't here when you folks set that up.
Put it into an account, so all benefit buyout, and then we could add twenty or fifty thousand, whatever we had to add to it to make sure it was safe.
Unfortunately, fifty thousand, all of, we add to it every year, almost did shoot up just about every year, because somebody gets done, such like when Paulette Wentworth got done. What was owed to her chewed into quite a bit of that fifty thousand. I think that only left us maybe about five thousand dollars left of the year in that.
That's, if that's what we should have, another town meeting, and had it put in, that we put another fifty or?
Well, we did. Next year, we did. We put another fifty thousand, but we don't always know when someone's gonna retire, because they surprised on us within three months, say, after town meeting. So we don't know if there's enough in there or not. So if you, and auditors is the one that asked us the town to do that years ago. But this is for the folks that don't get to use all their vacation, because remember a few years ago, highway department workers couldn't take the vacation, so that's why they have that line item.
That's how we, when we figured that, that was all supposed to be put into that. So we had one budget for benefit buyout.
I, I wasn't here when they said that, I just remember reading it. That's about it, that's all. And that would be something for the selectmen to change, if they wanted to ask for a hundred thousand dollars every year. Because if you take every department budget, you'd have to put at least a hundred thousand dollars away a year.
That ain't the way we figured it.
That to be.
It's up to, the finance officer should be able to figure out who's getting close to retirement, what they need, and that's how we were figuring it. We started it with fifty thousand, and then we're gonna add whatever we needed to it.
But yes, that's retirement. But you take the chief, if he was shorthanded, or such like the highway department, if they had five guys down there, got six weeks a year. Could only take two weeks, and we only allowed them to carry over one week, we'd owe them all three weeks of vacation that would have to come out of that. So you'd have to put more than fifty thousand in. You, you can't cover it just with that fifty thousand. That's why I'm saying you'd have to ask for a hundred thousand every year to put that money away.
Well, that's what I mean. That should have been built up by that.
But they, but if they did that, they'd have to go for every employee that has six weeks, eight weeks, twelve weeks, or two weeks. They'd have to add all that money in for everybody. And that would be an astronomical amount, where this is a small amount in each budget line.
Different purpose, a little bit different.
It took me a couple of years to understand this when I, I first started reading about it, but I do understand, I understand the value of it now versus the benefit buyout on the separate line item. I mean, we have to get it to the employees that they gotta take their vacation. They need those breaks. Highway department for quite a few years couldn't get those breaks. Now with the full crew, hopefully, all those guys are using up. There should be no reason why they can't use it up now. Any other questions for the chief? Well, chief, thank you for keeping under the five percent. I know that was hard to do with everything going on, plus adding a position. I, I do appreciate that. And I hope everything goes better for you and your department. I just wanna let you know, we do, the community appreciates everything your folks do and what you do for us.
Good old, thank you very much.
You're good. We'll let you go and have a nice evening at home. Uh, we only had you down for fire department. That was it. That's all the town administrator put you down for. I was wondering the same thing, but.
Oh, your math might be right. Put on your oh one eight, it's forty-eight hours per day times seven. Math comes out right, but it ain't working right. You got an awful long day there. Oh, one eight.
Oh, yeah, it should be per.
Forty-eight hours per day.
Well, it's two people, that's why it's not twenty-four. So that's forty-eight. It'll be twenty-four, forty-four hours a day for two people. I just made it forty-eight.
Forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours.
Equals two people.
Yeah, forty-eight work hours.
Anything else, gentlemen? All right, chief, have a lovely evening. Nice seeing you.
See you again.
Ready, sir. Do you let Mr. Roberts know he's up next? I know he's outside sitting in his truck. No, he's not. He's sitting in the hallway.
Just patient. Keeping a six-foot distance from you.
Ah, it's a lovely day in the neighborhood.
Usually.
Smile on faces, cheerful places. Roberts can go and have so much fun.
In Alton. Welcome to our meeting, Mr. Roberts. Would like to go over with your budget and highlight the highlights of the most increased spots.
Sure.
Go back over this, and then we'll come to you with questions.
Uh, let's start right off with highway full-time wages. Quite a bit of a jump. Two parts of this is adding a truck driver, a new truck next year, because the additional revenue would be coming in. Also, labor, as discussed previously with the board selectmen, has those two positions and see if we can get some more work done throughout the town. Of course, and that change is also the overtime changes, so that's the two down through. We get to benefit buyout, benefit buyout is set up, did with recommendation of the finance officer, setting that number, so it does look quite high. That's a number that we give and do as, and set that. Drug testing has come up. Drug and alcohol testing is gonna be doubled. That's a federal mandate. That's not by us, it's by them. That's the reason that's gone up. An increase in printing, because we're not, no longer using the town hall printer, coming in the town hall, utilizing that. We've done a lot of stuff in-house, so that's kind of that COVID thing. So all our forms and everything, we have to print, we print down there on our little printer. So that's ink and paper and all the other happy stuff. Biggest one, one of the biggest ones is gonna be sand. That's because the bid's up, almost five dollars a yard. There's quite a jump in the bid, as you can see, that was awarded last week. And we had no control over that. We kept the same amount. That had jumped considerably. And. Also, the jump would be on the second page in line painting. That's a contract also, fourteen thousand one fifty-nine, from eleven thousand seven six seven six. That's yellow line painting as well as all the white lines, all the parking lines and all the crosswalks. Here's what he said on this, prior to what it was before, the new contract says, almost this work has to be done prior to June fifteen. We're not waiting so long.
We're doing, we're doing extra mileage?
Excuse me?
Doing extra mileage of lines?
We're doing the entirety. Before, before, we only did the white lines. We didn't go with the contract, because the contract came in late. Right. We didn't have the contract number. So we didn't get all the stuff to here before. So getting back to the contract number, that's actually what it's supposed to be. So that does all the white lines, I mean, all the, all the parking lines, all the crosswalks, and the yellow lines at about ninety-two thousand feet. So again, that goes back to contract. Couple of recommendations. I don't know if you wanna go line by line, or just a couple of recommendations that I have to use the board to think about. They're not in here, but for you as the board. I would look into cold patch, which would be changing its pothole repair, is what it's listed for. We're seeing the CIPs who are requesting a hot box. It's a three-ton hot box. Some of this stuff, we can get a hot top, keep it on-site for winter use, and break it up into cubes and be able to put it in this hot box and be able to use hot top. Rather than cold batch, it doesn't stay. Uh, the hot box is just another plus of piece of equipment, a very expensive piece of equipment, but when you get it for end result, you're not back there every two weeks, patching the same hole back in. You put hot top in it, it should stay pretty good.
And plus, you can leave it down there and just throw it back in the hot box, too.
Right, and you can put stuff back in the hot box. Uh, this one has, we, we put it up for basically the bells and whistles. It has overnight heating, so it stays in. So you get hot top the day before, you come back and plug it in. Has the electrical heating unit underneath. When we take it out, it's diesel-fired, it's liquid heated, there's a liquid shell around it, keeps it heated, good form of heat. It also has a hydro doors in the back, so you don't play with the jamming portion of it. It has a dump body on it, little dump body that brings it up, so it comes to the thing. Nobody's crawling up inside that hot box to grab anything. It can come with a sprayer. There's a couple of different options. We'll get to that point and bid it out. That'd be up to the board selectmen where they'd like to go with that. You can actually put a tap coat sprayer on it. You said that's back and forth. Some people just put a five-gallon bucket of tap coat. It's messy. It's gonna look pretty when it gets here, then it's gonna look black after a while. I mean, it's just, it's what it is. Uh, it also comes with a. there's a new compactor that's in the budget itself, but, uh, compacted directly for one, so help put it in place, pack it down, roll it in with tires and roll it in with the compact.
Thought our leases went down.
Excuse me?
Thought our leases went down.
Want us to talk, we'll talk, we'll get to that, um, let me just go down a little bit further.
Can I ask you a question on that hot box?
Yeah.
What's the ballpark figure, what are you talking?
Actually, the CIP report.
I don't have.
It's up there, it's forty.
Forty-five thousand, it's one of the spec sheets you showed me on. Well, I'm, I'm just familiar, familiar with the first ones that came out.
Some of the problems.
Years ago, and then our pays nothing like.
Yeah, because some of the, we're, we're repairing particles constantly, and it doesn't stay.
No, forty-nine thousand nine twenty, both assets. Forty-nine thousand one twenty, that's the ballpark figure for it.
Yeah, they've come a long ways, but.
Yeah, I.
But you can.
He should be on your screen, student, that's actually, that's what it's. It's, it's quite a machine, you know, and we can do it again one ton, still will, it's, uh, you know, a couple of guys running this thing can get a lot done, and you think you're going to end up with a lot better.
It'll save us money overall.
And that little bit of asphalt that comes out, you put that off to the side, the one ton at night, they throw it back in, that will actually reclaim itself to a certain degree. They can only do it so long because it, it loses stuff.
Right.
If they add it with some other stuff that's already in there, it can next. Uh, also, uh, for you to look at, you know, catch basin cleaning, you're going to have to think, you know, all the construction jobs we've been putting on, this year we're going to put in thirty-five more catch basins. Now, uh, one of the benefits is, is what Josh is doing now with the GIS system. There's a thing in GIS, we can reduce what we do by actually, along the line, once the GIS is in, all these, all these catch basins will be numbered, and every year we'll take down much sediment coming out of it. You're only taking six inches of sediment out of three foot sump if you want to do it every two years, or you want to do it every three years. We're not at that point. We just go from one to the other, to the other, to the other. And we're trying to get some type of records to be able to enter it when the GIS comes in. And that's, that's the benefit to that. So do you add more to the catch basin clean? We probably ended up with about two-thirds of it done this year. We're not giving them. And we just changed catch basin clean, too. So whether that's good or bad, we don't know yet. Roadside mowing, you know, everyone's going to come up with that. We're doing about a little more than a quarter a year, the gentleman's doing it as a contract, does a fabulous job. Guy we had before left a lot of stuff going on the side of the road, chewed up and bad. This guy actually cares, backs up, cleans things up as he goes. He's doing a great job, but again, you can't go, I don't think you can go four years before you finish up a piece of road. Going to have to somewhere along the line start thinking about increasing that, so we can get at least half of it done one year, half of it next year. I didn't increase it here, it's going to be entirely up to, you know, I'm looking at all the numbers whether or not we're going to do that. New lease purchase, why the numbers didn't change? The reason the numbers didn't change is not negotiating. If you take any of that amount of money out of it, it's well-funded at that point right now. But next year when you negotiate that lease purchase and how you want to do it, then you change the number for the following. Right now, I think it's going to be fifty-one and fifty-seven thousand. There's actually some justification that is in back of this that shows.
Yeah, the estimate.
A little bit of what, what it is. We think that's what it is, it's just a quote, it's not a bid. So you don't know, should you change that or shouldn't you change it? I don't know if you'd do that in the first year. You know, uh, that, that would be kind of tough, that's the reason I didn't change it. So that's about, I think, all the notes that I had.
Ken, I guess my first one for you, reading your line up, maybe I'm missing words. Are you looking to add a driver and a labor?
Yes.
Reason for both?
Driver increase is because you're going to see, and I'm surprised they're not before you yet.
I know the roads, and you told me about that, that I understand, the labor I'm not quite understanding.
The labor is, you know, it depends, it depends where the board goes. The board hasn't really given a big indication. Are you going to a public works director, you're not going to a public works director? The good thing about a public works director is, and I'm talking for or against it, that he is the resource that can say, we did it this year, you saw it done. We took two people plus myself from Highway, we took two people from Parks and Recs, we took Jim from the cemetery, we took two volunteers and we went in and we hit the cemeteries from one end to the other and straight gave a stone. That's what a public works director can do officially. What I did was kind of unofficial. But we got it done because that's what you gentlemen wanted to see done, and I'm happy to get it done. But that's what you have to do, you have to draw from the resources. I know Kelly had put in for one, and I talked about that, and it was discussed here. I think one should be there, one should be with Highway, and then we figure out what they're going to do. They might be a special project someplace. I can think of one sitting in Bay.
Bay.
Beautiful sidewalk job that will take a good amount of time, just to lay a new stone there, pull it all out, put, you know, replace what it is, reset what it is, and only from twenty or thirty feet at a time, so you're not destroying the whole body of your property.
So when you ask for labor, are you going to require though a license, commercial license along with that labor?
Not that. The commercial license is for, the one that's out with the bid rate, the one that's out for advertising now that really haven't been anybody good, is the assistant mechanic, which didn't have a CDL before, we're asking for a CDL with that. Also, we're asking for a CDL, of course, truck driver. We haven't looked at that, but that could be up to the board, if they'd like to see a CDL slash labor. Everyone that's advertised now, I put CDL slash labor on it. The only reason I do that is they could pay this truck driver. But.
I do labor work, too.
But you gotta do labor work, that's the general thing, and if you ever see these guys, you know, they're in the dishes digging with their hands.
Oh, I understand that. I'm, I'm just asking, I'm just surprised that you wouldn't ask for it because they should need them to drive or something.
Well, they can sort of drive pickups and.
Pickups the one, I guess.
Small, and then the CDL drivers, you know, just their trucks be at need. We've done that before, we did that with the assistant mechanic that was here, we drove one of the smaller trucks when we ran into a bind. We had open pile truck, get it in and plow, and that individual went into a CDL truck. So it, it's that management portion of it, it's moving it around. Uh, but if you'd like to require it, we should have to change the pay rates on it. That's general laboring position is fifteen something, I think is the labor discussion. Truck driver is more.
The, the truck driving, I understand, is that the roads come in the way supposedly are, because I keep getting questions on, one up on Alt Mountain, saying why isn't it coming before the board of selectmen yet? I said, because we haven't seen anything come before us.
It's done. And the other one I think is done, completed with everything that we requested the engineer request. The only one that is not complete is the third road, would have been lower lane, which is off the little thing. There's still some items that have to be corrected prior to that. I'm not sure if the planning board you're leasing there, that's. I, I inspected all three of them with the engineer, two of them are ready to go.
Think it was more just legal and deed.
Excuse me?
Deed researching is one of the gentlemen said today, it's been something to do with the deeds of Mr. Jones, so, and I saw, if that's the case, then we won't see it until all those are done anyways.
I know that they had to write in, uh, they have a big sediment pond that was required to be put there. You had to have these rounded, of course, that ever got, ten, a few sediment ponds ever got put in correctly, they can actually drive around.
The other question is for Mr. Roberts. Yeah, I have one. On that, uh, let me see. You, you got a bunch of these accounts, like five thirty-two, chipper, these are maintenance accounts, right? York rate, spreaders, chipper's, power equipment, steam cleaner, trailers.
They're specific for that piece of equipment. So that was, we had to buy blades for it, we bought the spring, talking about the chipper. Glass springs for it, we bought the feed wheel, hydraulic motor for it, uh, new belts and stock, it all has to do directly with the chipper itself, there's nothing to do with any of the.
I, you know, I understand that, but I'd like to make budgets simpler. I'm used to a budget, uh, this type of a budget, and it'd be, that would all be listed under one line item, which would be, uh, equipment. And of course, then your justification would list your different pieces of equipment, but, uh.
It'd be entirely up to the board, I'd like to set that up.
And on the catch basin cleaning, I know you hit on that, uh, have you ever thought about, uh, catch basin cleaner? Doing it in-house?
Yes, we have, and the, the problem with some of this is, first of all, you probably qualify certain people on catch basin cleaner, whether it's a fine shell digger or it's, it's one of the big ones. Then you have to have manpower for it. Right now, we spend, we have a sweeper. Two men, two months sweep the entire town. David for the first thing in the spring, I lost two guys, pfft, they're gone. Then I lose at least two, if not three guys, they got to clean out all the sumps all the way around town, from all the end of the catch basins to sand, so they're gone. This is all just part of me, I mean, they're gone, so what do you have key left to start springing? They're already out, what? Now, let's see, you're losing, I'm not saying you're losing those people, but they already got big jobs going on. And we, we, you should be in the stages of planning what's coming up. Road reconstruction, since Cross is out of the ground, they're building. And again, whoever comes in here next, how you, how you start to set it up, they're going, they're gone. And you've got some great qualified people that are just going, and going in the middle. And I look at, getting back to this public works director, I look at this public works director as a guy that's not on the road. He's a guy that answers the questions. Matt calls up, I got a problem right here, this is what I'm looking at, blah, 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 this is the answer, Carl, I'll be right there. And we'll take a look at it and we'll figure it out. Today I ran into one, I finally got a set of plans for Lakeview Estates. They got a water thing that we gave rights to, I called you about it today, gave it in nineteen eighty-six, they come out, they got a well on one side of our scope road, comes out, runs down the side of the road and under the road someplace, we didn't even get it in the plans in nineteen ninety-six. But we knew it existed, we still didn't know it existed. The only reason I knew it existed, me and the catch basin guy, we're standing there reading the sign, says Lakeview Estates Water Well. They're over there, the well's over here, it's got to cross the roads. So we've been spending almost a month in research. I have Lisa looking at deeds, deeds or easements or anything, she had to find anything. Somehow they put a line right down the town rightway and right inside for three hundred feet, and then crossed under the road. I'm glad that gentlemen and I saw what we saw, because I'm getting ready to dig catch basins, they're ninety-six inches deep. It's PVC line and never find, we bought the electric boat. I didn't realize it was a well on one side of the road that fed all those houses. There is, so we, I redesigned it, dropped a few catch basins out, going with rip rafting and section, rather than digging down it. Supposed to be, from what I can see from, instead of original plans, not the ads build plans, it's supposed to be about four and a half feet deep, see that set of edges. In a different, I don't know, now I don't really want to dig into a four-inch main with a bunch of houses. But there's, there's one thing, again, those are the problem. Excuse me?
First thing is to see, find the easement part.
Again, everybody's looking. John's looking downstairs, seeking, finding in the files, everybody's looking, subdivision you looking. We just don't know how, when, what, where. There's nothing in black and white, there's nothing in my files. So, but anyway, those are the things that a public works director, he's the one that's got to do all that research and find out what that is. Sit at a desk, get on phone, start calling everybody in your group when a problem winds up. Cemetery's got a problem going on, call the public works director, public works director goes, everybody do this, this, and this, he comes back to the files. He's the guy that's going to sit here in front of you and show you five different budgets. Whatever you assign him to, he's the guy that's going to be presenting all the budgets. It's not going to be department heads themselves, it's going to be the public works directors, it's control. Again, if there's something major that goes on, that you as the board decide, we need to take care of that, take care of it now, you tell the public works director, and he draws parks and recs, grounds and maintenance, whatever it is, highway, somebody from the cemetery, and everybody goes and gets the project done. I mean, that's the way I look at a public works director, I mean, work done. But that's entirely up to you, how you got to set it up. But you got, and you aren't just amount of talent at the highway department, I just hope that you're able to utilize it in some way.
Well, now that you bring that question out, I mean, your whole crew's been spreading it out that you're retiring sometime in April, is that true?
Unofficially, April ninth. Officially, you should see an official letter or something.
Just wondering so the town could have time to go out and search, get the best candidate to fill your position, so you leave your position while.
Yeah, I'd like to see somebody come in a month before I leave, just so I can give them some background on a bunch of stuff and see. No, not everything's perfect that we have, they have to understand that it's not perfect. But, uh.
I wouldn't expect it all to be perfect, otherwise it wouldn't be a world.
Wouldn't be any fun.
Wouldn't be any fun. Well, thank you, I, I do appreciate everything you've done in the budget you presented to us tonight with what you're recommending. Don't know if I agree with all the positions around town that are going on. When yours, your department, I can understand it, especially if the board of selectmen moves towards a public works department, then they would have the resources to pull from, because I think certain departments would fall underneath the public works department. So, um, and I understand, I appreciate your, um, telling us and informing us of everything going on. This year, I especially enjoyed working with you, mostly out of all the years, because we got a lot accomplished this year, and your crew did an excellent job.
Yeah.
Still would love to have a cookout with them, emergency management team would let me. I just might have to do, I might just have to show up there one Friday afternoon. Do they allow alcohol on town property, ma'am?
I, I can.
I get a waiver? Can I get a waiver from the board of selectmen?
I can tell the guys, I'll fire up the bar view. But, uh, yeah, I can't say enough, you know, I've never been able, over the years and everything, do what I did, that's the crew that I. They made everything right, they learned. I mean, we have guys that, can't say this enough, is that we have, we have truck drivers who get out and know how to lay pipes, set catch basins, shoot grades.
Unusual.
Pick it off the road, do layouts. Jack did the original layout, we just talked about one, he did, he's a great operator. I said, go through, Jack, you tell me what you think you need, just put little paint marks and we'll go back through it together, see how you do. He might have changed, it really did good. So that tells me that they've learned. Matt is an excavator operator, he can build a road. He can build a road, and very seldom I get a phone call from him saying he's got a problem. And usually it's something that is unforeseen, ledge, something, how do we get around this, or how do we work around this? He's built some fantastic roads from the day he got here to build that excavator, he's learning so much and does such a great job. Again, like I said, I can't say enough about the crew that's there today that I know, it's just, you've got a mechanic that's working triple to be trying to keep up with everything, so.
Yeah, we know how to herd.
Yeah, and, and sort of, that's another thing that sometimes like going to have to, there's not even not getting any applications done. Or a chain one, you have to change the other. But that's a little bad, but some things that are going to happen is you're not going to have that extra help, and it's going to cost you more money to send things out. I know, you just have a mechanic working a boat, ten dollars an hour, it's a price of dollars. Ten hours with a wire, really? We don't pay a hundred and ten dollars an hour. I still believe in the old concept, you know, that I can do it in-house cheaper than.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
No matter what I pay for insurance, no matter what I pay for everything else. I said this once before, excavator and operator was costing me a hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour on the last emergency we had. That was an operator, excavator, we broke our excavator down by hours and broke our operator down by. It's a hundred bucks an hour, just by owner, so, anyway.
Any other questions, Mr. Roberts on his budget?
Anything else at any time, please call.
Mr. Roberts, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You're great. All right. Yes, um, blessings on to your crew, please.
All right, very nice.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, we're going to move on to IT department, forty-one forty-five. Mr. Josh will come join us, or he can sit from there and speak up a little.
You didn't hear me, did he?
This is, I don't know, I thought it was supposed to go down a lot less this year because he got everything last year.
Oh, it would just take a hundred thousand.
Went down a little, but I thought it was going to get down one more. Went down about twenty thousand, thirty thousand, because he got his server last year and everything. Good evening, Josh.
Good evening.
Thanks for joining us tonight, or every Monday night. We do appreciate it. So if you'd like to go through and highlight your budget, or anything outstanding or decreasing, that would be fabulous.
Yes, so, uh, I'd like to cover a few, uh, added lines, uh, in particular, uh, zero one seven, the benefit bio line, as well as, uh, two oh seven and two one four. Uh, I think you, everybody is already aware of the benefit bio and, and why that's there. But the two oh seven and two one four, I just started, uh, traveling in the assessing vehicle. Drive. Um, so, and that's in an effort to avoid using my car for local travel, which I've been doing for the past, uh, six years. Um, so, I'm trying to lessen that and then move more into, uh, traveling in a town vehicle. Um, so I've added these two lines to, uh, work along, along with that effort. One for gasoline, this will be five hundred until we get more of a feel for how much gasoline I actually use. And the vehicle maintenance is five hundred. I'll be sharing with the assessing department. Share vehicle, we'll share the cost of the maintenance. I believe in, in the assessor's line, he has a thousand, so basically I'll just be taking five hundred of that.
Five oh two to server, those are new, right?
Yeah, so, uh, we did get that big server last year with the unanticipated, uh, funds from the state. Uh, this is more for desktop computers and laptop computers. And then also you'll see the word server below for basic IT management servers. Basically what I'm looking for is very inexpensive servers, two of them, uh, to be exact, to handle daily operations like backups. Uh, and then also operations such as monitoring for antivirus. And important security, uh, items. I've put them under the hardware PC and server line because although they have something to do with security, they're more hardware. So that I can put those, uh, pieces of software on them and then utilize them for that. Uh, one other thing I'd like to bring out was a, um, it's kinda interesting, the telephone migration, um, to the new system. We were paying eighteen thousand, um, as of last year under line five forty. I have successfully been able to migrate almost all of the town, uh, telephones to the new system. It's working great, uh, and we're gonna be looking at cutting costs quite a bit, so that's why you'll see the eight, the drop from eighteen thousand to ten thousand one hundred fifty. I actually anticipate a drop further, uh, because right now the ten one fifty, uh, that includes all of the telephone lines in an unlimited, uh, subscription plan. So once I get a feel for how much we actually use the telephones, uh, by the, by the minute per call, I can get a better idea of how much I can shave off of that, uh, on top of what I've already saved. So that was, that was a big one.
You got town offices on five oh nine. Down five fifteen, the town clerk's a different system or something? That ain't included in town offices?
So five oh nine is just for, uh, the town offices excluding the town clerk's office. Um, that's under the address. So permitting and community development would be, uh, planning and the building department. Applications, gap welfare management is, um, for Mary and Stacy, they use it for welfare clients. And the BMSI software suite is for accounting, payroll, uh, direct deposits.
Now, why did the highway take such a jump? It's, uh, five twenty, went from twelve to thirty-two. In two years. They getting different software or something?
Yes, so they have a, uh, vehicle diagnostic system, it's software and hardware that hooks up to the computer. And this actually enables them, kinda like the, uh, code reader on a, um, on a regular vehicle, except for it's, it's more for these commercial trucks. And it will actually, it will break out wiring diagrams, it will show them the next step in the process. Yeah, it's, it's pretty comprehensive. And then on top of that, yes, we did go with a, um, uh, a vehicle management system, uh, that tracks all repairs, uh, depreciation of the vehicle over time. You know, whether it's worth to put the money into it or if it's, you know...
I'll have the vehicles down, they ain't worth it, we already get rid of them from all the other departments and ship them nationwide.
Right, it was brought up to me that it was very important to you to understand that the, uh, whether or not it's worth the money they've put into for the vehicle or, or not, which a system like this would be able to, to, to do for us. And they're actively using it, they're doing a great job of it.
This service toll.
One one three, train.
Yes.
I noticed, right, you had thirty-two hundred, you haven't spent any this year, you're asking for one thousand seven, I see the backup. Will you be using it?
Uh, yes, between, my plan is to go between encumbering some of that, uh, which is why there's a decrease, uh, for next year. Um, but then on top of that, also, uh, pursuing some certifications that are accelerated.
The other third person I've heard says they're gonna encumbered something out of a budget. Only people that have encumbered is us.
He's gonna request to encumber. To, to the town administrator, the town administrator to us.
He's the third one that said it, I'm going, well, all these people are coming with funds here.
That's the plan.
You know, I have no problem with training accounts, as a matter of fact, I like them, I just like them to be used though.
This year was, this year would have been hard for anybody to do training for COVID, so, you know, COVID, especially with computers, cause they change so fast.
Yes, and I actually, I can just say certification's the way to go with that. Because basically the certification expires, which basically keeps you, it's every three years, but it keeps you current. And it's less expensive than pretty much any other way to go.
I have one other question, Mr. Chairman. The cert, uh, five eleven, software of fire, is that something we haven't paid yet?
So, that's been paid. It has, yep. Um, and this has a slight increase, um, because the, the fire department had actually consulted with me on this, they had moved their program to a, a new system. Uh, that is a, a whole lot more comprehensive than the old system that we were working with. So the slight increase is well worth what they're getting out of the new platform.
Oh, according to this, you've got the same amount, three thousand one ninety-five, was that on the nine one budget expense? Yeah, well, uh, two thousand twenty.
Five oh four, four one four five.
Five eleven.
Five eleven.
Sorry.
But according to the, but according to this, of the August readout, it hasn't been paid, I guess it's just been paid.
Yeah, so I believe the fire department took a step to move forward with that, um, and, and that was early this year.
Any other questions for Josh?
I think it's a good job. Looks pretty good.
Anything else like that, Josh, before we let you go? Well, go back to your seat anyways.
Uh, yeah.
Well, that sounded pretty bad, didn't it? Go back to your seat. Well, that's quite, yeah. Thank you, Josh, I appreciate it. Thank you for everything you've done this summer too for us, coming to every meeting. I know you could be at home with your wife and everything and we do appreciate you staying with us every night and the other, also the other meetings you've had to attend. All right, gentlemen, for that, we'll move on to audio and visual media equipment, four one nine nine.
Level funded.
Yes. This is for your equipment that tapes the meeting, records the meetings and stuff like this. And now he's gonna hit us all the way because he wants more money. A special note from the town administrator. See, couldn't even pass the note, could you? I had to give it up.
It's thirty-five hundred.
Oh, shame on you. Of the thirty-five hundred, on top of the thirty-five hundred?
No, no. Audio and visual meeting equipment.
That's right, one second. Thirty-three fifty, balance remaining this year, one forty-nine, like you said, it's for emergency equipment in case they need to get something, in case something breaks or have to replace anything.
Anything to do with audio and video.
Is that what the screen and stuff?
Myself personally, I'd like to see you do away with this line item and put it into his computer department.
Somebody brought that up last year and you recommended against it.
Did I, last year you showed it in the minutes? You gotta go back and prove that to me, I trust you, but you gotta verify it.
You didn't wanna see it chewed.
For, for what little amount, looking at it again this year, I would see us changing because it'd be still specific to that equipment. Not way there, he won't feel like the long dove, just under budget.
Okay, got all that new equipment now, it's already bought, so.
Gentlemen, any questions for Josh on this one? If not, I'm willing to pass over this tonight. Okay, see you in nothing, Josh, you can come back and join us on this side of the room.
Thanks, Josh.
All right, gentlemen, at this point, we do have other business as deemed necessary. Let's put at your desk tonight, uh, correspondence from the police chief. You folks had talked about this when I was out, I believe with my summer cold. So, I'm gonna, the chief is asking that we be allowed to sell the Humvee, he's had a bid of twenty-five thousand dollars. If I remember right, you gave him the okay to put it out there, get bids put on it and to sell it, and to receive bids to sell it. I believe the chief is there, he didn't come in tonight, I take it?
Um, he did not, I'm not sure he's here remotely, but if I may speak, um, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Selectman Holt had a question earlier about if there was a minimum bid that was set, there was not. Ryan, uh, the chief advises, we did not set a minimum bid, we put it out there for thirty-five thousand or best offer to see what we could get for responses. And just noted in the caption that we would accept all reasonable bids and the highest would be presented to the governing board for final approval. Yeah, and, and this was on munisibid.
It was on what bid?
He says here, this is the listing on munisibid.
It says here eBay.
Yeah. And munisibid, and Facebook.
Oh yeah, it does say that, yes, marketplace eBay and munisibid, yes, it does, Facebook.
Yeah, I know, we, we talked about a figure, but we didn't put a...
Did, did he have an idea of approximately how many people bid on it? It just says there were many offers.
I'll ask him.
Out of curiosity.
If he doesn't answer me right away, I'll email it out to everybody.
It's really not a big deal.
Cause usually those bids, they'll start at a hundred bucks.
Yeah, 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 so there, there just says, we received many offers.
So the question I have for you, Donovan, sir, if he sells this piece of equipment, does that money go to the general fund or can it go back into his revolving fund? It's the way I'm looking at this memo from him, he feels that it's gonna be going back into his revolving fund and then if there's any money, any extra money, he can take it out of the revolving fund to purchase a new vehicle.
Some kind of a hangup on selling that, the money could only be put back into another vehicle? If I remember right?
But the selecting made...
That, that vehicle was given to us.
That vehicle was given to some federal funds.
Dollar for, yeah.
But it's still a piece of town equipment, when you go to sell it, does that have to go back to the general fund?
Says revolving fund.
Well, I, I'd like to have that clarified.
Cause that was a stipulation when, see, we, the chief can explain it to you, he, and he did at that meeting, there's a stipulation if we sell it, where the money goes.
Well, the stipulation is coming from him or from the federal government?
By federal government.
I'd like to see it in writing.
He, he has...
Cause taxpayers' dollars have gone into pay for the repairs of this and also I think when we did the paint job and everything, that didn't come out of the revolving fund, I don't believe. Came out of his regular operating budget. So it is really a piece of town equipment versus being traded in, it's gonna be sold outright. I'd like to hear from legal opinion too on this, make sure we can do what he's requesting us to do.
And if we paid a dollar for it, it makes it as legal tendered anyways.
So there was something with the federal government originally, whereas if you accepted it as a gift, you, and you wanted to get rid of it in the future, it had to go back to the federal government, but what he explained was that has changed now so that these people with all these... The federal government didn't want back all their old antiquated pieces, so, so they were sold, but the, the purpose of the revolving fund did not change until I think it was eight, two thousand eighteen or two thousand and nineteen for all fleet, all fleet, not just for special details, but for fleet items. So, originally, any work that was done on that vehicle would not have been taken out of the revolving fund, it would have been taken out of his budget.
Which is taxpayers.
I understand that. But I'm not sure if the money can go back into the revolving fund.
I feel that it should go back to the taxpayers, the taxpayers should get...
Well, that's what she's saying, she's saying, basically she thinks has to go back to the general fund. All I wanna know is for sure, because if, if the chief just thinks the twenty-five thousand could be used towards the purchase of a new vehicle, once he sells this, along with whatever else was needed through the revolving fund, which would probably be enough.
Four-wheel-drive pickup truck capable of hauling his emergency management truck to at least be a two fifty to three fifty, if it's a Ford or a thirty-five hundred Dodge. So...
I vote no on that, cause I, I disagree with adding more vehicles down there.
Well, the whole purpose of selling Humvee was to get a pickup truck, if I remember right.
A big pickup truck.
Night last year.
Trailer.
Cargo trailer, the boat and everything.
Um, I recommend that you approve this winning bidder sale and then have finance, hold on to the twenty-five thousand until I can get some clarification from legal counsel, which will not be this week. So it's gonna be a couple of weeks before I can get a, a legal determination on that, so in order to not lose this winning bidder, which apparently was done earlier as well, I recommend you accept it, the transaction can happen and then the funds can be dealt with in a couple of weeks.
I agree to that.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the, uh, bid of twenty-five thousand for the Humvee.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Holt to, um, accept the twenty-five thousand dollar bid for the Humvee at the police department, seconded by Mr. Rochelle. My only question is that all, all town equipment, radios, hardware, brackets, everything will be taken out of that before it's sold, right? There's not included lights or anything else, correct?
Which was talked about before at the other meeting that he was going to...
Wasn't in the motion, that's why.
That was, that was, um, agreed upon before when he got permission to sell the, the Humvee, that everything would be removed.
So I'm gonna ask you, gentlemen, to rescind, your second rescind his motion and put that in your motion.
Like the stripped-down Humvee, something like that, or minus the equipment or...
We accept a bid of twenty-five thousand for the vehicle only and no own, uh, town-owned equipment will go with it.
I'll second.
May my Mr. Holt to accept the twenty-five thousand dollar bid that Mr. Heath has submitted to us, seconded by Paul Rochelle, any further discussion?
Do we need to throw in there, Earl holding the check, until we know what we can do with it?
I don't think so, because that would be a standard procedure anyways and that's something... I don't think so, because that would be a standard procedure anyways, and that's something that I can simply direct the finance department to do is just hang onto it until, until you hear back from me once they check with the board.
Is this going to be made out to the town of Alton anyways versus Alton Police Department's revolving fund?
Yeah.
Um, you're going to have to sign off on the title anyways, correct? Or is it all not that it doesn't have, well, it's going to have to have some form of bill of sale.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? I'll poll the board, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Whitman. Mr. Rochelle.
Yes.
Mr. Holt.
Yes.
Mr. Wentworth, yes, vote is affirmative, four-four, one against, Mr. McDonald voting nay. So, gentlemen, at this time, I don't believe there's anything the town administrator has to report. We have no other further business unless Mr. McDonald has his finger up and Mr. Rochelle does.
Well, I'd like to make a motion. I just have already done, to get them all to budget committee so they, they start their meetings and they need budgets established.
Well, I'm still reviewing them, so if you want to move with that tonight, you gentlemen, can you make a motion to do that? I'll probably vote no on every single budget.
I, I want to study it some more myself.
I'd like to have the town administrator, how many more budgets we got left to do, do you remember? Town clerk, did you do that while I was going on that one meeting?
Yeah, yeah, she and the election budget were done, the administration hasn't been done, you know.
Water hasn't been done yet.
Right, um, there's a handful.
The total budget committee October.
Well, we could start reviewing some of them, we got still ambulance to go, water department to go, police department done. So the weights we have, so we can start re, bringing these back up to vote on them, as long as you give us enough time so we have all our notes and our.
Are we going to get to September ones?
Yeah, I can, that can be on the agenda, it can be approval of certain ones and then review of others that you haven't seen yet. We can kind of separate it on the agenda.
It won't take long, but I think there's some that we need to go over, I think the highway department and parks, building and grounds will be our longest debated one. Are you fine with that, gentlemen?
Yes.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn tonight so these employees of ours can go home to their families.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion is made to adjourn by Paul, Paul Rochelle. Do I have a second? Do I have a second, do I have any discussion, hold on just a second.
Please sign.
Oh, you just have to sign. I'll, I'll poll the board, Mr. McDonald, Mr. Whitman.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Holt. Mr. Wentworth, yes, vote is affirmative, thank you, folks, for joining us tonight, we are adjourning at.
The signature.
Seven twelve.
Signature file is here.
Okay.
How many?